The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I call the council to order, let the role reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Leifeld. A quorum has been established. We have a couple of presentations this evening to begin our meeting. We have a presentation from Pleasant Hill Library. Mary Scheide is here. Mary, welcome to the council meeting. We're very glad to see you again and get an update at the library.
Mary, it's the council members and city staff. Thank you. I just wanted to give you a brief update on what's happening with Pleasant Hill Libraries. We did close the building on September 30th, last day of last month, and we spent the last two weeks packing and moving, and we are open for business at Westview Mall as of this morning. So our address now is 1355 South Frontage Road, and we're in Suite 200. You're familiar where the DMV offices are? We're across the hall from them. So we have a bright, well-lit, very large space, and we have similar hours but not quite the same. We're open Monday, Wednesday from 10:00 in the morning until 8:30, and we're open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 10:00 until 5:30. We have the same phone number. You can find us online all the time as you are used to doing. All of our services are available with the exception of our 3D printer and our iMac computer. Those have traveled to another branch for the time that we're closed. Otherwise, we have all of our materials, all our print materials, audio books. We have our copier printer, our back scan equipment. We have four desktop computers, and we have 12 Chromebooks. So anyone with a library card can come in and check out a Chromebook and use it in the library space and just return it before they leave. So that's another option for people. Our Wi-Fi is there.
And we are ready to roll. When we first started planning our fall programs, we didn't know what space we were going to be in. So we turned to our community partners to talk about what we might do with our storytimes and some of our other programs. And this would not surprise you, we have generous community partners in town, and so we will be offering, from now until the end of the year, we'll have our Storytime for Babies. We'll be at Tilden Community Center, that's a partnership with Early Childhood Family Education, and that's on Monday mornings, just like it always is. And then the Hastings YMCA has generously offered their community meeting room, and we'll be having Storytime for two- through six-year-olds on Tuesday mornings. That is a change in the day of the week, and it's at 9:30 in the morning instead of our regular time of 10:30. We're really grateful to these organizations for helping us out. As I say, we just didn't have any idea how much space we would have. But we do have enough space, so starting in January, we will have Storytimes back at our interim location at Westview Mall. We have also partnered with some other organizations in the community for some adult programs. We're doing some art classes at both of the CDA facilities, at Rivertown Courts, and at Mississippi Terrace. We're having our Bells of the Bluff Bell Ringing Choir Concert at Regina Senior Living. That's in December. And we're having our Gingerbread House Contest, so the interim space will smell like graham crackers. And we are hoping to partner with organizations for the entire time that we are in this other location, since we don't have a meeting room there. So we expect to be there until the spring or summer of next year. And as a reminder, the library is being expanded by about 1,500 square feet. We're adding a new iLab Maker Space. We'll have a larger community meeting room, and we'll be adding a 10-person conference room and a group study room. We'll have an expanded children's area and a family restroom, and we'll have a much more efficient staff workroom and automated materials handling. So those are some of the features that we're very much looking forward to. So we do think that it's going to be worth the wait, and we encourage people to come out and see us at Westview Shopping Center.
Excellent report. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Councilors, are there any questions or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, thank you, and keep us updated.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Stacy from Tennis Sanitation with the Green Project. Stacy, welcome. Nice to see you again here at the council meeting.
Good evening. So tonight, we have the Hastings Football Connections here. They were our third quarter green team. We have Mike O'Connor along with Andy Haas and a couple of the varsity football players here tonight. They did a great job promoting their event, and that definitely shows through their proceeds. They collected a total of 29.79 tons. Their total proceeds are $413.03. They did a great job.
Outstanding. Mike, will you tell us a little bit about the program and how it went with Hastings Football Connections?
Say that again.
Can you tell us a little bit about Hastings Football Connections and what the money's going to go toward?
Sure. Hastings Football Connections is, really, it's the booster club. And so I'm the president of the club, and he's our fundraising chair. We were going to have some seniors here, the captains, but they're all taking pictures with their moms. The seniors.
You got their priorities in order then, I think.
So we had a couple of our junior players. The money goes to, we pay for a ton of stuff. There's a 9B football team, doesn't get funded by the schools, so we help pay for the coaches for that. We got new headsets for the coaches this year.
The Harca's.
Yeah. The capes for the players. We bought a bunch of those this year. All the paint that goes on the field at each game, the H and the N zones, we fund that. Just all kinds of stuff that we pay for.
That's fantastic. Well, you did an excellent job with the almost 30 tons, and appreciate what you've done, not only for the football program but for recycling, so it's a win-win for everybody.
That's awesome. Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Go Raiders.
Yeah, go Raiders. Our last game's on Wednesday.
You bet.
We got a first-round bye in the playoffs.
That's South St. Paul, right?
What's that?
That's South St. Paul, Wednesday?
South St. Paul, yep. We got a first-round bye in the playoffs, so our next, first playoff game will be Saturday, the 27th.
Twenty-seventh.
Okay, fantastic.
Should be the last game on the grass.
I think we'll all be there.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great. All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And then also, I presented Melanie with a revenue share check as well this evening for $231.09.
Okay, thank you very much, Stacy. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have before us the minutes of the regular city council meeting and workshop on October 1st, 2018. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of those meetings? Seeing none, they stand approved. We'll go to council items to be considered, any additional council items to be considered? Okay? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda, counsel. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsanic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be equitable here, so I'm going to ask that item number seven be pulled off the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay.
Eight and nine as well.
Okay. So the ones that basically deal with the grants and middles for Block 1?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. They've been polled, we're going to put seven, eight, and nine under administration. Okay? Okay, we have the consent agenda before us as amended, with those items deleted. Councilmember, would you make that motion? Councilmember Balsanic makes that motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brox. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We'll go to a warning of contracts, a public hearing. We have this evening a public hearing regarding an ordinance amendment, community development and building department fees. John, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, we do have a public hearing tonight to consider an ordinance amendment, change to our fee schedule here, and I'll go through what is being proposed tonight, and then you may open the public hearing at that point. We have a couple of fees related to what we term our zoning permits. These are administrative permits for fences, accessory structures, swimming pools, and the like. Part of those were adopted as part of the 2018 budget, a fee increase from $50 to $75, but there were a couple of them that were missed. And so what we're proposing tonight is to have all of those zoning permits be at the $75 level. That would be a $25 increase from the current $50 fee. Within your packet, I did provide some information on how we compare with other cities as far as our fees goes. I think we're somewhat in the middle on that one. We also are looking to establish a home occupation renewal fee, albeit we've been charging that for some time. I don't think that's within the fee schedule, so we want to make that official, increasing the zoning permit or zoning ordinance fee copy to $20, and then eliminating some duplicative language that's in the code right now, in which fence fees are within the building department and also within community development. So that's what we have before you tonight. I could stand for any questions, or you may open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, for that presentation. I'm going to open up a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone here who would like to discuss the community development and building department fees as described in the presentation? Anyone here to talk about that particular issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, let's take that issue on. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have an update on the water system. Nick, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Good evening, council members. I'll keep it pretty brief. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we've been since our contamination incident on the water system from a couple of weeks back. So after we got the system back in clean, working order over the weekend of September 22nd to 24th, we then worked with the Department of Health to do an assessment and a look at potential causes for that incident, and they furnished a report out of that and indicated that there's no definitive cause, but there's a few different potential causes for that. We've made that report, along with numerous other documents available on our website, done a variety of Facebook posts to call attention to that. And then what we've been doing on our system then ever since is we've tested at a little more frequent clip than we would typically do for the bacteria level, and I'm happy to report, every single test we've taken since the incident has come back just how we want it, 100% clean around the whole city. But we've also then introduced low-level chlorination on all parts of our system, and that's generated some interest from the public. As you might imagine, it's a change. We have had a number of calls and emails and different forms of communication come in with questions and concerns, complaints on that, and we've started a commonly asked questions page on the website and leaned quite a bit on our colleagues at the Department of Health, who are well-represented here tonight, to help us answer some of those questions because, as you might imagine, we get various ones that we're not familiar with, the territory that those questions are kind of treading on, such as health implications and things that we don't necessarily have as city staff the expertise in. So, excuse me. So we've been working extensively with those partners. I think if there's any questions from the council, they'd be happy to stand for them. I'm certainly happy to stand for questions as to the operational pieces, and we have Lee here, too, who could speak to other communications components of what we've been doing lately on that front. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Nick, for that update. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, I have a question in regards to the water. Something I noticed is that when I go to drink a glass of water, there is, it's almost like an off-gassing coming off of the water at first, and so I've been like, I'll pour a glass of water and I'll set it aside for a few moments and do an air and then come back and drink it, and it seems to help. And I was wondering, how long is that going to take place for? I was talking to some colleagues, and they thought perhaps it had something to do with the fact that we haven't had chlorine in our water before, and it might have something to do with chlorine and minerals reacting together, and it might go away over time. Can you speak to that at all? Because I'm sure there's lots of folks having that same kind of experience, and it's really different.
And they are, Councilmember Foltz. That's one of the more commonly asked questions that we've had, is the taste and smell concerns. And from what we know, this is a common reaction. Again, being we've never chlorinated, there's a reaction that takes place in the pipes between the chlorine and the biofilms that can build up in there, and that produces some of those effects, as well as just the fact that people aren't used to it. It's more detectable if you've not had that experience before. So, you know, that's an issue that we think could last a little while, because we don't know exactly how long that would take to break everything down that's in the pipes there now.
Okay, thank you, council member. Is there further questions? Comments? Councilmember Brox.
One of my questions that I have been kind of exploring is alternatives to chlorination. I know you and I talked about this briefly, that there are other methodologies for handling water collection and treatment. Are those other methodologies things we're looking at, or is this a temporary solution before we come up with a permanent one? Can you just kind of explain where we're at and where we expect to be going?
Yeah, that's a great prompt, Councilmember Brox. We are moving into a feasibility study of various means and methods for providing long-term disinfection for our system. So we're going to be working with StanTech, a consultant that we've utilized for water system-related issues in the past, has a lot of expertise in that area, and they'll be exploring several different ways that we could accomplish disinfection, point out what it would take to implement those, what the pluses and minuses are of initiating any one of them, and we'll bring back a report on that to the council in December, is what our goal is.
If I could, just ask a follow-up question. Will that involve any cost estimates of what those different options would cost?
It would. Yeah, but we want to get a general idea of the costs that would be associated with any of those different methods that we are looking at.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that we've all had a number of residents contact us, and they're, you know, concerned. And so something I like to speak to about with folks when I'm on the phone with them is just the liability associated with in case it happened again, you know? And so can you speak to that a little bit? Like, what are the liabilities for the city if we decided, if we weren't going to chlorinate and something happened again? Because I think a lot of folks are more understanding when you think about it in that capacity, if something happened again and someone was actually harmed, and so I'm assuming that's a lot of the reason why it is that you're not going off the chlorination, is that you don't want a recurrence and the risk of it happening again and the ramifications of it.
Yeah, you know, it's really everything to do with risk management and protecting the public health, and I think our partners at the Department of Health would echo that. We want to maintain the public's confidence in the water supply, and we're doing something that's tried and true right now while we look at what we could do long-term in order to prevent a subsequent incident and minimize that risk altogether. So that's how we're looking at it. I don't think I can put a figure on a liability or anything of that sort. I'd look to others who are more in that business of, if there were to be a computation of some kind, but I just, again, go back to we're doing something that's there to minimize the risk that we would have.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. This may be a question for the state, but first of all, do we fluoride our water also?
We have, yes.
Is that a state requirement?
It is. It is a federal regulation, I believe, that, a state regulation, so.
And my question then for the state is, could this be, I mean, I read that we're one of three that are not doing this at a level of our city and above. Has the state looked at making this a state regulation, so it's not put in each community?
Yeah, this is Carla Peterson, Minnesota Department of Health.
Welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you. And yes, that question does come up pretty regularly, and we, over time, we have fewer and fewer large cities that don't disinfect. And in fact, Hastings is the largest community in Minnesota that doesn't disinfect. The next largest is around 13,000 population, and what happens is, the larger your distribution system is, the larger your vulnerabilities are. So you might have a perfectly good well or wells, but that distribution system has that biofilm and that vulnerability to E. coli or total coliform. And so that's why we don't see a lot of large municipalities that disinfect. There are quite a few small municipalities, less than 500, I think we have around 200 lone cities. But in those communities, they have very small distribution systems, and they have wells that have performed well and haven't had detex in the past. So for a very small community, disinfection might not be a best choice for that community. But it's that large distribution element that makes you more vulnerable than a small community. But you're right, it has come up before.
And I think it should continue, because even if there is incidents like we had, does the state, because really, we followed the state's rules, and then should the state have a communication plan, too? If this happens somewhere else, here, use this, this is how we get the word out about the state regulation versus every community doing their own thing to get the word out? Granted, we know our community probably a little better than the state, but I still think we should be looking at this as a state. If it's proven data, why are we rustling over if we should do or not? I know there's other solutions. I've researched what Councilmember Brox is talking about, and that goes back to my next one on the risk management. I would ask, and maybe you already know this, but does it always have to be chlorinated, or could we so-called shock, shock the system once in a while, and then so we can let the community know, Ward 4, you're going to be shocked if it's good for three months? Is that an option?
Sure. So communities of your size, I don't, there are none that do shock chlorination. But there are smaller communities that do do shock chlorination, so every six months, every three months, they'll use an elevated concentration of chlorine throughout the system, and they'll flush, just like we did with the boil water advisory, just to maintain, try to manage that biofilm so it doesn't get sort of, you know, out of control. And for small communities, that can be very doable. You know, you notify the public every three months that this is what's going to happen. But there are some fluctuations in chemistry when you do that on a regular basis that are, can be unmanageable, and for a large distribution system, those fluctuations could be really, actually, they would be very challenging if that was a regular maintenance piece, because you're just, you're constantly hitting that system with these chemical changes in chemistry and biological activity, and so you have sort of this instability, I guess. So, and in fact, I think I might have mentioned it earlier, but too, you know, not only E. coli and total coliform, but viruses are now on our radar screen. City of Madison, there's a lot of communities where we actually have better analytical methods, and we can detect things like noroviruses and other viruses in our drinking water. So that's another thing that we're protected from when disinfection goes in place. I would encourage you to talk to your legislator.
Okay. My last question, Your Honor, is for probably staff. One of the possible culprits was the backflow preventers from the blown-out sprinkler systems, but we do not, example, my sprinkler system, I don't have it checked. I don't know if it goes bad. Do we require homeowners to make sure it's in working order, or do we go out and check these backflow preventers?
Yeah, I think there was some recent legislation that acted on ensuring that, but that homeowners are required to report it, to have somebody do it and report it. That is something that we've worked through our building department on recently. But as you might imagine, there's a lot of these sorts of devices or possible interconnections that we're not going to be aware of, that would take a thorough investigation of internal plumbing of buildings, perhaps, cross connections and things of that nature, that it's a very large undertaking to be able to go through and complete an inventory on something of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Councilmember Balsanic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, just to follow up on that, I mean, I know if a person's putting in, a property owner's putting in an irrigation system, there is a permit, which is required, there is inspection that is done. Unfortunately, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but there are enterprises out there that do sell irrigation systems, and there are people who put them in without the appropriate equipment. I know that what is required of our permits are these backflow stoppers, whatever you want to call them, so that nothing gets blown back into your line. And I'm only mentioning this for the public's sake, that please try not to cut corners, because it, at the very least, it's going to affect you as a property owner in particular. Maximum, it could affect the entire city. So it is important to try and follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Is there any further discussion on the topic? Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify the implications of adding the chlorine to the water, interacting with the biofilm, what's the negative impacts? We're testing levels of biological matter to ensure that there's no negative behavior between the two?
So most of biofilm in itself is not a health risk or a health hazard, but biofilm is, I don't know if you've seen it yourself, but it's sort of a slime, or not slime, but it's a film, you know, within the pipe, and it's a great home for E. coli or total coliform. And so it creates this environment that's conducive for things that are a health risk to be in your water main. And by adding chlorine, you basically kind of, you manage that biofilm, because you'll never get rid of biofilm. That's perfectly normal for any water system, but you keep it at sort of a maintained, you have control over that biofilm, essentially. And the reaction, there are going to be taste and odor complaints for, I would say, for at least the next month or even two or three, just because it's still, it's kind of attacking that biofilm to get it to a manageable level. And once it gets to a manageable level and there's stability within the system, then you should see a drop in taste and odor complaints. But it will take a while for that to happen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to follow up, just to clarify, no health concerns or any adverse effects from adding chlorine to the water?
I've mentioned this before, that when you add chlorine to organics, you create disinfection byproducts, and so those are carcinogens. But in general, actually, this part of the state or your community has very low organics in your well water to start with, and so there's not a lot of organics for the chlorine to react with. So I can almost promise you that you wouldn't have a violation for disinfection byproducts, because actually, they're pretty uncommon. But, you know, it will take a while to get that stability within your system, and I think we've actually started disinfection byproduct monitoring, or it's scheduled for this quarter, for quarter one, for next, starting in January, I believe. And we can take some tests earlier than that, too. That doesn't mean we have to wait till January 1st. So, but that's true of any system. Every system has some organics in their water, so it's essentially, when you had disinfection, you will always have some sort of disinfection byproduct. And the federal maximum contaminant level, it's based on excess cancer risk, so we all have a base cancer risk based on our genetics and our environment, and the additional cancer risk due to disinfection byproducts, if you were to exceed an MCL, is 1 in 10,000 to 1 in 1 million. So that doesn't mean 1 in 10,000 people get cancer. It just means that your risk is, it's a very small risk compared to other risks that you have in your environment and, yeah, within your environment, drinking water, air, soil, all of that. So, but you will have disinfection byproducts, but there's no taste or smell associated with them. And we can give you more information on that, too.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you for the update. Appreciate that, and we'll be continuing our, as Nick said, our feasibility study, and we'll have that report back in December as to other disinfections and what direction we may want to go. And we appreciate all the efforts of the Department of Health, so thank you. Okay? We'll go to the administration portion of our agenda. Item seven, eight, and nine in relation to cleanup grants for Block 1. If it's okay, Councilmember Balsanic, can I recognize staff right away to give us a background on it, and then I'll recognize you?
That will be fine. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, council member. John, welcome again.
Thank you. What we have with these two items?
What we have with these two items, 7 and 8 are related as they are grant submittals for cleanup grants. Number 9 is authorizing a signature of an existing grant that we have. So I'm going to go through a little bit of history on how these all relate to the property. The property we're speaking of here is a one and a half acre parcel that's located just north of Art Space, between Art Space and the river. It was purchased by the HRA in a couple of different pieces between the mid-'80s to the early '2000s. There was a tannery there, there was some bulk oil storage there as well. We purchased them with the understanding and the desire to redevelop those parcels. During the time in the '90s, when we went through some environmental remediation on the property, spent some significant funds on that, I think we figured between acquisition of the parcels was around $650,000, environmental cleanup, probably another $200, $300 on that. So we've put about $1 million into that property at present. We had marketed the property for a long period of time for development, part of our downtown master plan in 2002, called for that for mixed-use development. We had an original contract on that property with Sherman and Associates around 2005 or so to develop that. Market didn't play well for us, and so that contract was finally expired. Over the last 10 years, we've done some marketing of the property. We did have C.B. Richard Ellis under contract for a couple of years, marketing that along with some other properties in town. Didn't really pan out to much. We've had some desire from various entities over the years on that property. And so we have been working with a entity called Panache Cidery over the last two years or so, with some plans to potentially put in a cider tasting room, maybe some residential units and offices on a smaller platform, probably about 2,600 square feet of building, three stories high, so 2,600 square foot footprint. And so what we've been doing is moving forward with environmental grants related to that project. We understand that we went through a lot of environmental cleanup in the late '90s. However, when the Art Space project came through last year, we learned that the environmental cleanup that was certified in the late 1990s was no longer valid, because the requirements for cleanup had changed. There was portions of the site in which contaminants were dissipated on site, where now they're required to be completely cleaned off from the site. So we went through a Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental assessment on the property earlier this year with the help of Broad InterTech, they're the people that also did the Art Space project, and then have gone through what's called a Response Action Plan. What all this means in English is that we've done a lot of research on the property, we poked holes in the property, we know where the contaminants are, we have an idea of what needs to be cleaned up, and we've submitted that to the MPCA for their approval. And so the first thing that we have on here, on the agenda, is the authorization of the signature for a grant that we received earlier this year to do the investigative work. That was about a $23,400 grant that we received, we've expended those funds. So this would be the grant agreement related to that. The other two are for the cleanup end of it. We anticipate the cleanup cost for this property to be about, between $250,000 and $300,000 on the site. And so there's two entities, Metropolitan Council and Minnesota Dede, in which we would be applying for grant funds through those entities. We've been successful in getting grant funds for cleanup from both of those in the past, for the Art Space project, as well as the Hudson project. So they're aware of the situation in Hastings there. Along with that, as I think the council's aware, we've had an entity, H-PAC, that has been looking at an Ancestors Park to be developed within the Hastings Riverfront, and in particular on this property itself. So we did have a HEDRA meeting last Thursday, in which they made a presentation to us, we heard the presentation itself. We also had on the agenda that night to consider a letter of intent from Panache to work forward towards transferring the property and going forward with that type of development, the cider project. After some extended discussion, HEDRA did vote on a 3 to 2 vote to move forward with Panache at this point. So what that means is, we are working with them towards a project, and we're working towards environmental cleanup on the project itself. We anticipate with the Panache project that we would come forward with a purchase and development agreement for HEDRA consideration. We're aiming to do that for the November meeting, just so that we can provide a little more formality to the letter of intent that was submitted on that one. So, in essence, the actions that we have before you tonight are related to environmental cleanup grants themselves, grants that we would be applying for. The environmental plan that we've moved forward with has been based upon this Panache plan. Does it mean it can't be anything else? Does not mean that. However, if the footprint or the area of excavation was significantly different, we would have to amend that plan for MPCA. So I can stand for any questions anyone has.
Okay. Councilmember Balsanik, since you brought this up first, I'll recognize you, sir.
John, you are so articulate. I really don't have anything to add in any detail. I think the important thing, and the reason I wanted to take it off of the consent agenda, is to let the public know that this is not yet a done deal, as far as it goes with the cider. But in order to protect our interests as a city, we have the right to apply for these environmental grants, and it would be really silly not to. We do have a deadline, I believe, on them, is it November 1st, you said?
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know, time is of the essence. November, just around the corner. I'm excited because it's deer season. I'm not too excited because winter is coming, but at any rate, it is a move forward. Now, I had asked the task force that is looking forward to doing something with that Block 1, in terms of something historical, and asked them to come tonight just to see that we are not, you know, headed in one direction, but we are just protecting our interests, as far as that's concerned. They evidently chose not to come, which is fine. This is a group that is working with the Prairie Island Nation, it's a group that is working with H-PAC, it's a group that is working with the National Park Service, and is working with a number of other entities. But at this point, from what we gathered at the HEDRA meeting, which Councilmember Vaughn and I are a member of, is that their approach right now is kind of fluid, but it is moving forward. And we had made suggestions as commissioners on HEDRA for them to look at possibilities that they could do, in addition to just solely wanting to take on this desire all by themselves. So this is not, this grant submittal authorization, 7, 8, and 9, is not in any way, shape, or form detrimental to this task force and the organizations that they hope to represent. It is just saying that, as a city, I think we're doing due diligence by going through the process of the environmental grant submittals. I know Councilmember Box, and I spoke a little bit before, and I'll let her go ahead and say what she would like. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Box?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Balsanik. I think my main question, as I am a council member who doesn't sit on HEDRA, I did watch the meeting, and I had, I guess my question that I came away from that with was, when you have two competing interests for a piece of property that we own, how are we evaluating the value that we're going to receive when going with an option? So how do we calculate the value of a commercial property? I would say that we would calculate that in property tax. How do we calculate the value of a cultural, significant park? And how do we take those two things and line them up and say which one should win? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm assuming that HEDRA has had competing interests before, and I'm just curious, how do we evaluate two very different proposals and assign some sort of criteria to them, and pick which one should win? I don't know.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Not really. I don't think it's a rhetorical question. I think if HEDRA is going to have competing proposals with different levels of certainty as to the details that are in there, I mean, how do we, you know, how do we assign a value to those two competing things, and then how do we choose? I think that what I saw out of that meeting was just that question for the future of HEDRA, and I think we're in a good situation to be having competing interests in one piece of property. That makes me happy. But how are we going, how is HEDRA, in this case, because HEDRA has the authority, how is HEDRA going to choose when you have two different proposals that are very different and have different economic outcomes? How are we going to pick? So I guess that's my question for maybe Councilmember Balsanik and Councilmember Vaughn. Do we have a process in place by which we line those things up and assign a value, and then determine which one would be most beneficial for the city when they're very different proposals?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I'll give it a shot.
Sorry.
I think, going back to last Thursday, I think it's, the one word I want to put in here that Councilmember Balsanik, that we did sign, it was a letter of intent. And I think that was the reason that motion came forward, was this property has been, since the '80s, designated to go to a commercial piece of property, and that's why we were cleaning it up to get to that. We had an offer in front of us, a letter of intent to move forward, still have a lot of stipulations to get to. So that's how I came with my vote, to say this is just a letter of intent, we still got to get a long ways to get there. The other part was those timelines. We did ask those questions about November 1st is when the grants are due, the next opportunity for grants is almost six months later, maybe May, or so forth. So we knew, the letter of intent actually asked to have it cleaned up by, have an answer by April 15. So that was kind of the reason. And, John, to clarify this, we need a facility in that grant process or a concept drawing to even apply for the grant, for this grant. So that's why the Panache had a concept in front of us of a piece of property to use to put into that grant application. So as that moves forward, going to get to your answer, I think that's a great problem to have, and I don't know if I want to define a way of, this is, who wins or not, because I think we have more property. If you look at what's down there already, HEDRA owns the property to the west from there. So there's more opportunities. But what I encourage the group, the task force, to do is, don't stop, because I still think these two could actually come together. Because if you look at Panache's project, they actually did not take up the whole piece of property. These two could maybe be partners when it's all done. That's why I encourage them to keep marching forward with their task force and their concepts. But at the time, what was in front of us, the data was, we had a proposal in front of us with a letter of intent, with a dollar amount of, I think, $1,000 to move forward. That's what we needed to get the grant application going. We knew we were up against a timeline, and now we'll wait and see.
Thank you. Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, and to add to that, you have to go back to what our title is as a commission. It is the Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority. Now, I had asked the question at the meeting last Thursday, is it in the purview of HEDRA to turn over land, sell land, whatever you want to call it, to a nonprofit, which is not going to do anything economically with the piece? You know, it's going to be a park with historical significance. That is the thrust of what we were told. Now, they did, the task force did point out the economic advantages of promoting the arts, and had some very decent numbers of the financial significance of what the art community in and around Hastings has put forth. And this is not in thousands of dollars, this was in millions of dollars. The number of artists, the number of artists who live in the community, who spend money in the community, and the people in town who spend money on the artistic endeavors that are going on. So I didn't liken the idea of a non-economic entity taking over Block 1 as a slippery slope, but I just wondered, had we ever, as a commission, done this? Now, as I recall, John, you said we hadn't, but it was indeed within our purview to go ahead and do so, given the right conditions. Now, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, you know, we haven't been, had a project quite like this before, or an ask like this before. We've had other things in which the HRA, the HEDRA's been involved, where we've either donated the property, or put the property into parking lot uses, or other types of uses that weren't necessarily building-related on that one. So we have done that in the past. But something as specific as this, where it would be a transformation of a piece of property intended for commercial economic development into a park, that would be new.
And as Councilmember Vaughn mentions, and did mention as a commissioner on HEDRA, historically, this block, Block 1, it's been groomed for economic development. We are an Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority. So, there you are. Now, I was one of the two commission members who voted against going forward with Panache. Not that I was opposed to Panache, I was a little concerned about the legal ramifications of saying, well, we accept your intent, and could they hold, could Panache hold this to us, you know, from a legal standpoint, if we decided to go with something else? And I've since, you know, found out what the answer to that is. If the meeting was held again, I would have voted in favor of Panache. But at the time, I didn't have the right information in front of me. So I voted, you know, the way I thought it should go. This is a letter of intent, $1,000. $1,000 is a lot to me, not necessarily to, you know, other enterprises that are out there, but it is a step forward on their part. What we are saying to Panache is, all right, you want to do something? Come on. You know, put your money where your mouth is, and let's see some developments. I was on the council committee that met with Panache about two years ago, when they presented their initial idea for what they wanted to do down there, and it sounded very exciting. It still sounds very exciting, but haven't heard much from them for the last two years, until the task force came forward, and all of a sudden, we get a letter of intent with a check for $1,000, and suddenly, Panache is, you know, wanting to do business with us. Well, we got things moving, nothing like competition to get things off of dead center. Councilmember Vaughn had an excellent suggestion at the commission meeting. Task force, bring Panache to your table. Talk to them. See that they understand what you are trying to do, you can see what they are trying to do, and perhaps there can be some sort of consolidation, cooperation, collaboration between the two, and something that can be done. However, we do own land right across the street on the west side of Block 1 that could be used as a park. One of the reasons the task force is very excited about Block 1 is that historically, that is the location of the narrowest crossing to get across the Mississippi River. And so the Native American community, for eons, made that their major crossing to get on the other side of the river. And so the task force is saying, there's a very- And so, the task force is saying, there's a very historical necessity to hang on to that in terms of, uh, doing something to honor, uh, the history, uh, that has encompassed Hastings for the, for the last, you know, few hundred years, and even before Hastings was a Hastings with the Native American community. So, there you have it. That's why Councilmember Brox and I wanted to, uh, take this off of the, uh, consent agenda and move it up for discussion. I think we've had enough, to borrow a phrase, I think we are fully informed.
I was, I was going to ask if council is fully informed.
And so I would therefore make a motion, uh, to, uh, accept seven, eight, and nine of the consent agenda, uh, for approval.
Councilmember Balsanek makes a motion, uh, to ex, uh, to approve item seven, eight, nine on the consent agenda. It's their second, second by Councilmember Brox. Is there further discussion to that motion? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm glad we're having this conversation, because sometimes I get concerned about when things happen at the commission level, and a lot of things get agreed upon, and then when it comes to the council, it's already thoroughly baked, and we don't really get any opportunity to talk about it. And then, you know, we feel awful even like suggesting changes to it, because it's already been, um, fully agreed upon. And in this particular case, um, I am not fully in favor of Panache acquiring that land permanently. I would be open to them leasing the land. Um, Councilmember, um, Balsanek was alluding to the fact that they came before us. Uh, I think, I want to say it was just last year, it wasn't two years ago, because I, it was sometime in the last year. And, uh, what concerned me about their proposal was that they weren't presenting to put permanent structures on that land, rather it was these box car temporary structures that get, um, put on it. I had asked if they were, you know, planning, are you putting in a foundation as a, for instance? Are you digging in the ground? And they had said that they, that they weren't. And so, um, it really, uh, makes me nervous, because, um, the, the proposal was for them to buy the, to buy the land for a dollar. And you just said that we've put a million dollars into that land already, you know, and cleaning it up. And then here's, um, extra effort to making sure that the soils are properly mitigated. And so, I would really like to see if Panache is going to be moving forward with this, that we seriously look at leasing the land, giving them maybe like a ten-year lease with an option to renew every five or something like that, rather than just handing it over for a dollar, because we'll never get that land back. I mean, if we've put that kind of money into it, I would rather see a permanent structure be placed there or a park, rather than, um, giving it away for a dollar for a temporary structure to be placed upon the land. And so, that's how I feel about it, and we haven't had a chance to talk about it as a council, but I would just really hope that we are, um, looking at all of our options as we're moving forward by that.
Councilmember, if I, I can offer a couple of clarifications on that. As far as the price of the land goes, we, we are not marketing that land for a dollar to Panache on that one. Uh, we are still negotiating what the purchase price would be, but I do not believe it would be a dollar on that one. It's going to be something that's going to be closer to a market, uh, sale on that property. Wouldn't be a, a dollar sale on that one. A- as far as the lease idea goes, I, I hear what you're saying on that one. Uh, if it's a situation in which there are temporary structures in place there, I, you know, I think that holds some value to it. If it's a situation where they're putting permanent, uh, improvements onto the property, you know, that, then, then maybe that would not be the, the right thing to do on that one. But with the purchase and development agreement that we'll be drafting up, we'll be answering more of those questions or setting those questions up to be answered prior to any transfer of the building. So, what I understand to be the framework of the purchase and development agreement would be, here's the things that we need to have in order to transfer the property. Here's the due diligence that this, that Hedra would need to do. Here's some of the due diligence that, uh, Panache would need to do. We'll go through a period of time to do that. If all looks good, we would transfer.
Hmm, okay. Terrific. I just hope that we're really holding them to a higher bar, because what they had presented to us just several months ago was, was less than ideal, you know, for, for, what the, what the value is of that property. And so I kind of feel like it, we're giving them, it's a, it's a gift. And so I want to make sure that it's a, it's going to be, you know, a viable business that's going to be there a long time, and that they're actually putting in a considerable amount of resources. Like when you look at the Hudson Building as a, for instance, they're putting a tremendous amount of investment themselves into the structure. And so, you know, it helps balance out all of the, you know, taxpayer funds that have been put into it. And from what I had seen, um, at first blush with just the, what was it, an hour-long meeting that we had had, that, um, particular proposal didn't have that kind of economic, um, ha, you know, weight to it, as, um, the Hudson did, obviously. And so, um, I'll get off my soapbox for right now, but I just really hope that, um, it doesn't come to us fully baked. Thanks.
I think, uh, council, that, uh, you know, let's be careful what we say. I don't think it was a half-baked idea. Uh, you know, with count, we have an Economic Development Authority that owns property, not the City of Hastings. Hedra owns this property. It came before Hedra, and they were not asked whether or not we're going to sell it to them or not. There was a letter of intent of understanding. What is before this council tonight is whether or not we want to move forward with economic development grants. That's what was before us. We do understand that Panache has an interest in it, but, uh, we have a letter of intent there, and, uh, that is what's before the council. We're not sitting here making decisions on Panache.
Right. Correct, Your Honor. I realize that, but as I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that oftentimes, things are, um, fully decided upon within, at the commission level, and like, for instance, developments of neighborhoods and things of that nature, which is terrific. And then when it's brought to the, the council for consideration, like, there's already been like mu, years of planning sometimes that have already gone into something, and then they're asking for our final approval, and it doesn't really give us the opportunity to make any comments or suggestions to it when it's, what, and what I'm trying to say is fully baked is that it's completely cooked through the plan, is already, um, solidified. It's almost as if we're more of just that final nod in approval. And so that's what I'm getting at, I understand. And I think it's awesome that we're going to get these grants and, and finish the, um, the removal of any kind of potential, you know, pollutants or contaminants that are within the soil. So I don't mean to, um, discourage that in any means, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Lung, if you have a comment?
I don't want to protract it too much further, I guess, but, you know, when we look at opportunities to strengthen our economic development, um, within the town, there's not so many things that we can do as a council, as a city. There's a few levers that we can pull. One of them is how we zone things and how we market things and the commitment that we make, right? So, um, Councilmember Brox asked a good question and one that I think is a little bit rhetorical, because you don't, you, you know, you can't really answer it, um, you know, in a concrete way. But if it's a property that's zoned in that way, that's been marketed that way, and now we have opportunities in front of us, we cannot, um, we cannot turn our backs on, on those business opportunities, because then what message does that send elsewhere? So, you know, that doesn't mean that we've guaranteed this particular person, this particular business, rather, um, you know, absolute, you know, this is, you know, just a rubber stamp kind of thing, but, um, I think it sends the wrong message otherwise, so, um, that, maybe that answers your question. I don't know. I just wanted to put that in. That was about twenty-five minutes ago, though, so it's probably irrelevant now.
Well, if we weren't fully informed before, I think we certainly are now. Councilmember Balsanek?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And I, I would just like to, uh, clarify, uh, the, uh, money that has been spent for the cleanup over the years is, is not our money. It is, it's taxpayer money. Indirectly, uh, we're all paying for it, but it did not come out of the Hastings budget much the same way that all of the grants that were approved for the, uh, Great Rivers Landing, uh, project, uh, came from, uh, other sources rather than directly from Hastings. So I, I, I do want to clarify that. And, uh, as we have had with, uh, with the Great Rivers Landing Project, eventually, whatever happens with Block One will come before the city council. Uh, and, and, uh, we will look at that and weigh the options and, and go from there. So, um, uh, perhaps enough said about that, but it will be, I think, totally vetted by the council. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, we have the motion before us. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next we have comments from the audience. Are there any comments this evening from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Uh, council announcements? Announcements? Any announcements? Councilmember Balsanek?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be at a, a Dakota Communications Center Board of Directors meeting Thursday morning at eight AM, and, uh, then hurriedly, uh, on my way to the golf course.
Excellent. Okay. Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I just wanted to make an announcement for next Thursday, October 25th, here in the chamber councils, chamber couns, cha, the council chambers, hello. Um, there's going to be a candidate forum that is being sponsored by our local Hastings, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, so some of the folks before you will be up at the, the debate, um, at the council at-large positions, and, uh, I'm, uh, running for the House of Representatives, and our mayoral candidates will also be having the opportunity to have a debate. And then, uh, related to that, I'd just like to remind everyone that, uh, voting is already available to you, and I think the best place to vote is right here at City Hall. Uh, you can come on in, you know, park in the front area where we have the turnaround. You can park in there for twenty minutes if there's a free spot, and you can walk on in and, um, right at the reception desk, swing a right, there's a little sign that says, "Vote this way," and come on in and visit with our city clerk, and she'll allow you to vote during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, before four thirty. And, uh, I was just informed that there will be voting on Saturday, November third, from ten AM to three PM here at City Hall as well. And then on Monday, November fifth, the City Hall will be open until five PM if folks want to sneak in one day early and, and get her done. So, I just encourage everyone to vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember, just for, Councilmember Brox?
I just want to congratulate the mayor, Paul Hicks, for your award at the alumni of, Alumni Banquet that was just held. Um, you were awarded the Alumni of the Year, so I just wanted to say congratulations, and it's well-deserved.
Thank you, Councilmember. You caught me off-guard there. Thank you. Appreciate it, it was, uh, I'm humbled by it. Thank you very much.
I'm lost for words.
Yeah, doesn't happen very often, does it? Okay. Any other announcements? Uh, seeing other, I do have a few. On Tuesday, October 16th, at seven PM, there's going to be an HPC meeting tomorrow at seven PM here at Hastings City Hall. On Thursday, October 18th, at six-thirty, the Public Safety Advisory Commission will be meeting. On Monday, October 22nd, a week from tonight, from six to eight PM, council will be meeting in workshop, and we're going to be discussing the Highway 316 study update. So, a week from tonight, six to eight, here at City Hall, City Council Workshop, I believe it's at City Hall, right? Okay? Uh, Highway 316 study, uh, study update. Probably upstairs in the community room, all right? That same night at seven PM, the Planning Commission will be also meeting, Monday, October 22nd. On Monday, November 5th, at seven PM, that will be our next city council meeting. So our, the month will change, the next time we get together, uh, in this chamber. Uh, as, as far as community events, as Councilmember Foltz indicated, the candidate forum, I just want to let people know that at six-thirty, will be an open house here at City Hall to meet the candidates, and then the, the, uh, the discussions, the debates will begin at seven PM, uh, and there will be, uh, three, uh, separate debates. The first one will deal with the state representatives, uh, race and District 54B, those candidates. Then we'll have, uh, at-large city council candidates, uh, after that. And then finally will be the Hastings mayoral candidates that will be, uh, debating. So that's Thursday, October 25th, six-thirty, open house, seven o'clock, uh, the debate starts. On Friday, October 26th, is a community Halloween party, and that's going to, it's for children twelve and under are invited to dress up and come out to the community Halloween party from six to eight at the High School, uh, Commons. And then on Wednesday, some, first time ever, uh, we're going, first annual, if you can call it that, on October 31st, on Halloween, from four to eight in downtown Hastings, will be the Candy Crawl. And so, um, just wanted, first year ever, four to eight, uh, bring the kids down there, it'll be a safe environment. Uh, there'll be, um, also, uh, the displays will, uh, the businesses downtown will be in Halloween attire, so, uh, come on down for Candy Crawl, October 31st, from four to eight in downtown Hastings. And finally, uh, in regards to our Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiative, on Tuesday, October 23rd, from six to nine, uh, the First Equity Innovation Labs, a series of community engagement sessions with hands-on learning and reflecting exercises to develop a calming understanding of identified challenges. There'll be five sessions, this is the first of five, and you don't have to be at every one of them, we like to get you as many as you can, but, uh, feel free to get to as many as you can, but this is the first of five, uh, be held at Dakota County Pines Banquet Facility at 2015 Westview Drive. There'll be free childcare provided, and, uh, through the YMCA Kid Stuff Program, and food will be available for purchase. So, uh, again, six to nine at the Dakota County Pines Banquet Facility for Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiative. Uh, council, we have no law, or we have no further business before this body. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Brox makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.